Ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening and welcome to the September 12, 2022 meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment and Planning Board. A now called a meeting of the Board of Adjustment to order. At this time, the Chair calls upon Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let's pray. Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. We are grateful together in this planning board, Board of Adjustment, meeting to consider the needs of the community through the requests through our county leaders. We pray that we might be sensitive to the needs of both the community, the laws that are implied, applied, and to the needs of the citizens and their requests. May we have thy Spirit to help us to know the right things to do. Bless all to be kind, courteous, and thoughtful as we go through these proceedings, that they will be peaceful and be, we may accomplish the things that we need to do. And we pray for these blessings, and thy blessing upon all of our county leaders, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Motion has been made. And seconded to adopt the agenda as written, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed like sign, there's no opposition, so the agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes for August 8, 2022. The draft copy has not been completed yet, so we're going to table this item until the next meeting. Before we hear the matter before the Board of Adjustment, let the record reflect that quorum of the board members is present. The next item on the agenda is appeal of case 2022-18. Unless there's any objection, I move that we approve the directive from the county attorney to move this item to October 10, 2022.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, I'm waiting for a second.
I will second that.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign, there's no opposition, so the cases continue to October 10. Unless there's any objection, I'm going to adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting and convene the planning board meeting. County Planning Board meeting and now come to order. The following are the procedures that the board will follow. Each case on the agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the planning board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the planning board will provide a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case being heard by the planning board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period is not a forum for dialogue or debate with the planning board. The express purpose of the public comment period is for the planning board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions regarding a request to change the zoning map. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. The chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. In the event time limits are imposed, a speaker called may yield his time to another speaker. However, no speaker will be permitted to exceed twice the time limit imposed, and no speakers are allowed to address the planning board twice during the public comment period. When recognized, each person signed up to speak will do so in a civil manner from the podium. Before beginning to speak, the chairperson will ask that you provide your name and address for the record. Unless otherwise directed, all testimony, evidence, or comments shall be directed to the planning board, not to staff or the audience. If you agree with an argument for or against a requested change to the zoning map already presented by another speaker, please practice the courtesy of indicating as much when you are called to speak. Comments or outbursts from the audience are not permitted. After all speakers have been heard, the chairperson will close the public comment period. The applicant will then be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. Now call upon staff to present our first case, which is a rezoning request number 2022-19.
Good evening. This is case 2022-19, DAS rezoning. This is a request for a rezoning from residential agricultural to light industrial and light industrial to residential agricultural. This property is located off GSI Drive, off Taylor Road, it's in the Mayo Township. This is a straight rezoning. As you see, it's just north of the Stoneville area. I should have zoomed in on that. So the hash marked area in the zoning map is the area of considered for rezoning. You'll notice in the northern part of that property, there's a tidbit of LI. They're just trying to take the whole track down to RA. You see, it's just outside of Stoneville ETJ. It's in our O2 land class by this map, and there's no environmental concessions or considerations in this area. Our O2 land class does call for low-density, single-family residential uses as a primary use, and this area is intended to be mostly RA. The applicant couldn't be here tonight, and he and his wife have a stomach bug, so they've requested that I just present to them that this, they're looking for this property to be their forever home, is their intended use of the property.
So this property was rezoned at one time for light industrial?
Yeah, apparently, if you notice around there, all of the tip of GSI Drive, there's a lot of light industrial zoning. There's also some commercial and industrial buildings out there. This property is free of those buildings. There's nothing on it but some open area, some woods, and a lake or a pond.
Yeah, I drove out there today and talked to them from a distance and went through the property and what they were trying to do and why they're doing it. And they're kind of scaling back their industrial, light industrial plans, and then he wants to have that nice nine acres off in the back, and it's pretty nice back there, so it seems like a good idea.
Staff does consider that, based on the findings under Section 6 of the staff report, this is reasonable and consistent with the comprehensive land use plan.
Okay, any questions for Marzy?
I have one. None of this is inside Stoneville city limits, is it?
Nope.
It's outside the ETJ.
It's actually literally just outside their ETJ boundaries, you see from here, that gray area. Actually, yes, combination of city limits and ETJ kind of goes in that entire area right there, but it's just outside of it.
Public comment period for this case and ask Alan Carter. Please state your name and address.
What, sir?
Please state your name and address.
George Alan Carter, 254 Spring Road, Reed.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
Ask what I want to do, if that's what you mean, sir.
Well, hang on. This is about the DAS case, not the Carter case.
No, well, just saying.
Well, you told me to do it.
I'm sorry.
He's on the DAS sign up.
You might have signed up the wrong sheet.
And it doesn't appear that there's any speakers for the public comment period for Which case will move to motion?
I have a question for staff. Was there any calls for or against?
We had several calls. None of them were for or against. Everybody just wanted to know what was going on. As soon as people heard, they weren't doing more business. The ad was a little bit confusing for some people. They thought they were trying to do more light industrial. When it got clarified they wanted to do more residential agricultural, they were okay, but no one actually came out and said that's a good, you know, they were fine with that as long as it wasn't going to be more commercial, so to speak.
Thank you.
I think the placement of the sign was so far away from where the actual property is, it was, I could see where they'd be confusing.
Well, it's, the sign was placed on Taylor just so that more people could see the property location, because some of the calls we got were, because we notified a thousand feet out, some people asked where GSI Drive was, because we were hitting on the other side of Stoneville, so it was, we put it at Taylor just to be on the safe side.
Yeah, I get it.
Staff believes, based on Item 6 in your staff report, this is found to be reasonable and consistent with the land use plan, and we do recommend approval.
Okay, then we need a motion, folks.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to recommend approval of this rezoning request to rezone the specified parcel on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that were included in the agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes, as well as any and all agreed upon conditions also incorporated into the motion.
Second. Marzy, is there anything you want to add to this as far as conditions?
No, this was a straight rezoning, so it's all good.
Okay. All right, then, the motion has been made and is seconded to approve the zoning map change per this request. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign, there's no opposition. So the planning board will recommend to the county commissioners that this request be approved. Approval by this board does not constitute final approval. That can only be given from the county commissioners. And that, this case will be heard when, Marzy?
October 18.
October 18. Okay, thank you.
I don't have a calendar on me.
Are you prepared to present the next case to us?
Yes, sir.
The next case is rezoning request 2022-20.
This is the case 2022-20, this is the Carter rezoning. This is a request to go from a rezoning from residential agricultural to neighborhood commercial conditional district. This is a portion of the property denoted by tax pin 797401477353, and it's the north corner of the intersection of Sandy Cross Road and Giles Road. That's in the Simpsonville Township, and this one is a conditional rezoning. As you can see, it's just south of the Wentworth area as you come out. It's that little tiny portion right there on the northern side of Giles as it intersects with Sandy Cross. Most of the area around it is residential agricultural. There is some residential mix just south of it, and there is also some light industrial a little bit further down the road. As you can see, there is some water bodies in the general vicinity, but none directly affected by the parcel. And it is in our O2 land class, which, as we've always stated here, the O2 land class is traditionally for very low-density residential agricultural uses, undeveloped land and forest lands. The neighborhood commercial district provides a place for low to medium intensity crossroad shopping and neighborhood-centered shopping establishments. In your packet, I'm going to back the map up a little bit. In your packet, there is a list of conditions. I'll read them for clarity's sake. Accessory structures, animal facilities, apparel and accessory sales, automobile sales, rentals, automobile service, repair stations, car wash, flea markets, indoor floors, greenhouse commercial, health club, gym, offices of professional nature in public, outdoor display area, non-residential pet shop, places of worship and their customary uses, retail shops not exceeding 3,000 square feet in the area, retail sales not listed elsewhere, and temporary storage unit. Those are the condensed list that Lynn and the applicant came up with. And based on that consideration, even though this is our O2 land class, Lynn does feel that the truncated uses and the location of how close this is to the town would still represent a bearing and approval for the potential use. I believe that what they're trying to do is for automotive work, not retail sales. But based on that, even though it's inconsistent with the O2 land class, we do still believe it is reasonable in the intent of the land use plan, based on its location and the truncated list of uses.
Did you receive any calls or emails about this request?
I received one, Victoria received one. The one that I received indicated as long as it's not a Dollar General, they're fine with it. One, the other, the other one was just a basic inquiry. Both of them were just basic inquiries, wanting to know what was going on with the applicants really were proposing, based outside of what the list actually said.
Were there any against opposition?
Not that I received, not that Victoria received, unless there's some voicemails on Lynn's phone that we can't access.
Any questions for Marzy on this application?
Yes, me, this, I don't know, it doesn't have a figured number on it, but the list of uses here, the next column over, it's labeled NC, those letters, what are those?
Well, NC is for neighborhood commercial. The A would be an accessory use, D means it's permitted by right with restrictions, which can be found by the reference level next to, number next to it. P would be permitted by right, and T would be temporary.
And what was D again?
It's permitted by right with development standards. It means we have something in the end of the ordinance that would bear more regulation than just doing whatever they want to do.
P was permit?
Permit by right. There's no development regulations in the ordinance outside of what our standard commercial development would do.
Okay, thanks, Marzy. At this time, I'll open the public comment period for this case, 2022-20, and ask Terry Lynn to come forward. For the record, please state your name and address.
98 Giles Road, Reedsville.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
Sure. I'm interested, I didn't see in the package, maybe I overlooked it, if there's information about environmental, any implications environmentally. I know that there was a discussion about the bodies of water, and I'm sure Mr. Carter, who is an expert in his field, maybe has a plan for that, but it wasn't addressed, so I wanted to share that with the board. Also wanted to share, not sure if it's in the scope of this board, that that is a dead end road. We get a lot of unnecessary and definitely unneeded traffic already. If there could be a recommendation to get a no outlet signage placed, if we're going to have more traffic there, because it is residential down that road, and we live there with our children. And my last question for the board, or last thing for consideration, I noticed in the package there was information about restrictions of use and code enforcement and things like that, about number of cars. And I'm sure that there's a plan for that, but just wanted to know, does code enforcement really come out and enforce any issues that arise in the county? Because it seems that that doesn't always occur outside of the city limits, so that's all, sir.
Well, let me see if I can answer some of your concerns. First of all, code enforcement does respond when asked. The system is pretty much complaint-driven, so if someone calls and complains, then code enforcement will respond to the complaint. But code enforcement does not have the kind of staff in a county this size to just patrol and look for violations. That would take a tremendous amount of people, hundreds.
Yes, sir, I understand, and I don't anticipate that with Mr. Carter.
Your other concern about environmental, this property on Dodle Lee will require some type of site plan to be submitted, and the body that it's submitted to is called the TRC. That stands for Technical Review Committee, and it's made up of close to 20, 22 participants, 14 of which are voting. And the participants include the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Division of Environmental Quality, the county engineer, surveyor, EMS, fire marshal, school system, the list is endless, and everything on that site plan has to be approved by the committee before it can proceed. So the drawings required at that stage have to be extremely detailed. Fire hydrants called out, water, sewer, septic, all that has to be called out, and it's a very rigorous hurdle for the developer or builder, whatever, to overcome, and it can take many months of many drawing revisions, resubmitted and resubmitted until it gets approved. So those concerns are addressed at that stage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Now, Mr. Carter, step forward.
It's my son, he's the one doing the zoning for.
Okay, would you like to speak in his place?
That'll be fine, yes, sir. He knows more than I do.
For the record, how about giving us your name and address?
Chad Carter, 261 Vernon Road.
Okay, and what do you want the planning board to know?
What I'm wanting to do is just put a shop, well, first of all, to answer her question about the environmental, if that's okay. Everything that I do on cars, oil, antifreeze, transmission fluid, it all goes into a big container, and it's a company called Universal Environmental that comes, picks it up.
I'm familiar with that.
Yeah, so that's, nothing gets contaminated on the ground or nothing like that. So just to clear that up, but what I was wanting to do, I need the room to, I was wanting to put, you know, five or six base shop, real neat place, just to work and repair vehicles, that's all I'm after. So I just need the space.
Okay, and there's no building on there right now?
No, sir.
Okay. And you do understand that site plans and all that are eventually going to be required, right? Any questions for Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I have one question. So are you planning to just have gravel, or are you going to put asphalt down?
No. The most of it will be concrete and then asphalt, like, what I was wanting to do is put a fence all the way around it and have like the green slats that go in to kind of cover. To answer another question, and I understand completely, but like if you got a couple down cars, they'll be inside the fence where you can't see them. So it'll be, I would keep it, you know, real neat, you know, so, but no, mostly, it won't be any gravel, mostly concrete and asphalt.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, the public comment period for this case is now closed, and I guess we're at the point where we need a motion.
Actually, Mr. Chair.
And the motion, I'm sorry.
There's conditions in the...
I'm about to get to that.
Okay, I was going to say...
Include conditions A and B that are listed in the packet.
Where are the conditions? Oh, I get it.
Yep, there you go.
All right. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to recommend approval of this rezoning request to rezone the specified parcel on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and, as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes, as well as the following conditions also incorporated into this motion. A commercial-grade service garage must be erected in which to conduct vehicle service and repair. All service and repair activities shall take place within the garage. All vehicles shall be stored within the garage outside of the hours of business of operation. B, parking spaces and service bays shall be limited to five spaces, shall include one handicap person accessible space. Each space should be, should correspond to an adjacent garage bay.
Is there a second to the motion?
Just one quick question. These lists, we are not approving all of those correctly, we're just doing A and B.
Those are only possibilities.
Okay, I will second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the zoning map change for case number 2020 to 2022-20, that's a lot of Ts, with conditions. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign, since there's no opposition, the planning board will recommend to the county commissioners that this application be approved. Yeah, that'd be helpful if you do that, Marzy. Did you hear that, Ms. Lynn?
Marzy, who orders those? Does that, should we have put that in the motion?
No, as long as it's a state road, I can get DOT to do it. If it's not a state road, I can always talk to Ronnie.
Okay. So you can, you can, we don't need to do anything formalized about that?
It's just, I'll leave a note of it, we'll see if we can get something done in a few weeks. I say a few weeks because they have to be ordered.
Yeah, well, it sounds like that road needed it anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Cases that the planning board's going to hear tonight will now move to election of board officers. I'm sorry, sir? Oh, we, we're at the end of the cases that are going to be heard tonight. So we'll now move to election of board officers under new business.
Remember, you can always nominate people who aren't here, stick them with the jobs.
And bear in mind that whoever's going to preside as chairman, you're automatically a member of the TRC, and you have to attend those meetings, and they're usually held on Thursdays at 2:00 in the afternoon.
How often?
As needed.
As needed, but it can be...
But we have a schedule for twice a month. Second and third, second and fourth Thursdays of the month, or, but we leave open for those, and as cases come in within two to three weeks prior to those meetings, that's when we schedule them.
What skill set do you have to have?
Common sense, ability to interpret rules.
That probably just, you know.
Things a little bit, don't it?
Ability to interpret rules and regulations, you know, it's, it's more of a, you're on as advisory from the planning board at that position, but it's still a citizen advisory position, so we're not expecting technical, professional knowledge at a, technical, at a professional level, but we're... a professional level, but we're, you know, the base understanding that you have as Planning Board members should be sufficient in most cases. Other cases, you know, we can walk through anything with anybody at any time, so.
And it is a position that carries a voting.
Yeah, it is a voting position.
I'll do it if y'all want me to. I'd like to learn some new stuff.
Any other nominations for chairman?
I cannot nominate myself.
I also will nominate myself, I'm willing to do it another term.
You do, you will?
Sure.
Well, I nominate Paul.
Yeah, okay. Let me, let me rescind my nomination forthwith. Yes, absolutely.
All those in favor, please.
And Julie as a vice chair?
Okay, we got to do them one at a time.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You just sounded excited about it. We didn't vote to one.
All right, motion made and seconded to elect me as chairman for another term. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign, okay, I'll do it. Next is vice chairman.
I nominate Julie to continue as vice chair.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to have Julie continue as vice chair. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed like sign, no opposition. You got it, Julie. Okay, there is no old business, so...
Actually, well, it's not old business, it's still part of new business. We do have new appointees that should be joining us by our next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm hoping to have that information sent out to everybody in the next packet, so we can welcome all the new members.
How many?
I think there's two people that are joining us.
Can you share their names?
I would if I knew them off the top of my head. I apologize. I just, I just found out today that they did get approved at the last meeting of the commissioners, because I wasn't paying attention, and they're writing their, their letters of notification, let them know that what their term limits and things like that will be, so we'll have more information next time. You can always call Susan Washburn, too, and ask, she's got all the information. I apologize.
That's okay, you're fired.
That's fine. I just moved into my house, it's okay.
We have no old business before us, to the best of my knowledge, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign, no opposition, so the meeting is adjourned.